2024 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council to order, and if the city clerk could please take the roll.
Sure, give me one second. Sorry, I wasn't prepared. Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Flom?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Muggawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Stevenson.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect the concerns from the people whom we represent.
And this evening, we have a student from Tipler Middle School here with us, Millie Ironside, to help lead us in the pledge. Millie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very nicely done. As I mentioned, we have Millie Ironside here from Tipler Middle School. Thank you for coming tonight and helping us. I do have a certificate of appreciation here for you. I have a couple of questions, though, for you as well. Maybe what grade you're in at Tipler? If you have -- I'm going to give you the mic if you want. I got a couple. Grade, maybe favorite class, or if you've got a special teacher you want to give a shout out to, and then I have one other question after that.
I am in seventh grade right now, and my favorite teachers at the moment are my literacy teacher, Mr. Urbman, my choir teacher, Mr. Lindley, and my math teacher, Ms. Brown.
And Thanksgiving is coming up. Anything special to hear, thankful for this season?
Definitely my friends and my family.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight and helping us with the pledge.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering when it changes from favorite teacher to what class do you need extra credit in?
Either one works fine. She handled it very well. Next up, we have introduction of a couple of new staff members. First up, Emily Rock from the Oshkosh Public Museum.
Yes, I'm really excited to introduce Emily Rock, who has been promoted to the museum's new Assistant Director, Chief Curator role. Emily has been with the city of Oshkosh going on six years now, or close to six years, and had previously occupied the roles of Registrar and then Curator of Exhibitions, and now, most recently, Assistant Director, Chief Curator. Prior to Emily's arrival to the city of Oshkosh, she served for about six years at the History Museum at the Castle in Appleton, and she served in a variety of roles with programming, collections management, and curation, and was a part of a number of award-winning exhibitions. So we're really grateful that she has accepted this new expanded role, and she's hitting the ground running already, so we're really excited. Did you want to say?
Just that I'm grateful to this opportunity to keep serving the city of Oshkosh and telling the stories of the history of the Lake Winnebago region. I'm happy to be introduced. Thank you.
Congratulations on the new role, and appreciate all the efforts that you'll be doing on behalf going forward, so congrats.
Thank you.
Chief Smith has another introduction.
I do, I do, I do. I'd like to introduce you to Gemma. Gemma is our second iteration of our facilities dog. Scott Zapata has graciously taken on responsibility for taking care of Gemma after Magic, and we're happy to have Gemma here. I'll let Scott speak a little bit about Gemma, about her history and the partnership that we have with Journey Together.
She likes treats, too, by the way.
She doesn't want to be on camera. She's missing the camera. No, no, she doesn't want to be on camera. She's camera shy. That's what she is. That's all right.
So again, thank you so much. 366 days ago, we had to put Magic down. It was a terribly hard time, not only for myself, but for the department, for the city, and two or three weeks later, when we had Magic's funeral, the city really showed, I guess, a lot of love and a lot of grace for the animals and for what, you know, Magic was able to do for our community. So I am very, very grateful and thankful that the city and the police department has given us a second chance with another dog. Again, this is Gemma. She just turned two a couple of days ago, so she was trained at Journey Together, which is the nonprofit organization, excuse me, at the Oshkosh area prison, and she passed with flying colors. We are happy and grateful that she is a member of our family here, and again, she accompanies us on mental health-related calls for service. She also, you know, assists our members at the police department on their everyday mental health journeys, so when we have a really bad call for service, she's always available to assist with the officers, and, you know, she always comes and greets you with a wagging tail and is always ready to interact with you. So for that, we're very thankful and very gracious, and we can't wait to see what the next couple of years are going to bring with her. So thank you.
Well, we're thankful for your work with her, along with the chief's support, of course. I remember when Magic was first introduced in City Hall several years back. I can't remember exactly what was on the agenda that night, but it was a hot and heavy agenda. It was, and the crowd was a little warm. And the moment Magic came into the hall, everything changed. And it was that moment that I knew, you know, confirmed her role and what she's going to do for the community as a whole, because just walking into the room, the total tone of the meeting and the room changed that night. And I can't imagine Gemma doing anything less. So happy to have her aboard, and welcome aboard, Gemma.
Thank you so much.
I'll give you a little story about Gemma. Every so often, I walk into the office, and she's got a little baby gate out there, and I give her the opportunity to do a prison break, and she takes off running through the hallways, and she goes directly where the food sources are. Loves her treats.
She knows where the weak link is in the office. Well, how do you follow that, right? Next up would be citizen statements to council. I do not have anyone registered to speak under citizen statements. Let me just check what I do have here. Yes, no one registered to speak under citizen statements. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to us now on items that are not on the agenda, now's your time. Otherwise, we are going to move to consent. Moving on to consent agenda, I have no one registered to speak to anything on consent as well. I'll take a motion and a second for consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
The councilmember Larson is removing item number 30 -- what was it?
Twenty-four, six-one-four.
There we go. Item twenty-four, Resolution 24-614.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, item.
No, that's okay. Any other discussion or comments? If the clerk could take the roll on consent minus 24-614.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Muggawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
So that puts Resolution 24-614, approved purchase of 2025 IAS World Software as a Service Agreement from Tyler Technologies for the IT Division.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Go right ahead, councilmember.
Primarily fidelity here. This is, I don't know, because I'm not in the industry, but this is the same Tyler Technologies that failed our commercial revaluation, correct?
Okay. So this is the system that we use, that all of the addresses, all the properties in the city, we use it for our assessment team, and it is under Tyler Technologies. It's a different, I guess, section department. It's not the same group that we had worked with for a commercial appraisal. We had been working with CLT, which is another group that Tyler actually bought since 2000. They purchased them, so then, you know, we're continuing to use them. Tyler also owns Munis, which is our accounting system, too, so that is something that, you know, we do have other, you know, accommodate, you know, work that we do with them besides just the commercial assessments.
And I presumed as much, and you'll have to excuse my ignorance, because I don't do this, and I don't own that software, and I don't know what it does, but from a layman's perspective, it doesn't seem all that great to be giving them six figures again when we just had to spend six figures to make up for a mistake that their company made on our behalf. So that was why I was asking. If there's no, I mean, I did take two seconds to look. It seems like there are other options for this, but I don't have any way to know that my faith is shaken to the point where this is not a good purchase. I just don't know. But it's worth asking, obviously.
It really comes down to the standardization and compatibility with the software, and IT recommends this as well, because it interfaces with our GIS system and things like that. So while we were dissatisfied with Tyler, the assessing company, we've been very satisfied with the software that we've gotten from Tyler Technologies.
Great.
Any further questions or comments? If not, if you'll take the roll on 24-614.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Muggawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next up, we have pending ordinances, two of them. First, ordinance 24-623, this is to cancel the December 24th, 2024 council meeting. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion on this? If you'll take the roll on 24-623.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Muggawar?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 24-624, this is create temporary ordinance prohibiting alcohol in city parks, and I do have Ms. Lindsay Erickson registered to speak. Welcome.
Hello. Good to be back on this side of the dais.
It's been a little bit.
It has, seven months.
Who's counting?
Not at all. So Lindsay Erickson, representing Winnebago County Public Health, our address 112 Otter Avenue. So I work in housing policy and systems change. I've been working with alongside housing service providers, homelessness service providers, advocates, trying to identify needs and gaps within our community. I know on the surface, this ordinance change is about alcohol, but we also know that this, if you dig a little bit deeper, this isn't just about alcohol consumption and possession, because if it was, it would not be a temporary ordinance, and it would not specifically call out Opera House Square, where people, we know, have been living outside for the past few weeks, and that changes and ebbs and flows. Policies like this do have a disproportionate or a greater impact on people who are unsheltered. Limiting the possession and consumption of alcohol can be a way to criminalize homelessness, or at least use it as a justification for removing or forcing people to move along. We've been seeing more and more measures like this, such as banning camping and loitering on properties, and that can be proposed as a way to reduce homelessness, but we know that that's not always effective. We understand that as of right now, there are not plans to actually issue citations or enforce this. It's meant as a way to engage with folks, but we also know that homelessness is a complex issue. Housing people takes time, especially when we're in a housing crisis, and these are Band-Aid approaches that not only aren't effective, they can also cause harm. So not everyone who is unsheltered has mental health or substance use issues, but also the experience of being homeless or being unsheltered can cause many challenges. When people who are living outside are forced to move along or find for the experience of homelessness, it can make it much more difficult for service providers to maintain connection with folks, to maintain trust that they've built with folks, and we know that fines and forced removals erode safety nets that help connect people to service, and it further pushes folks to the margin. So temporarily banning alcohol in city parks is not going to solve a larger problem that we have. If there are illegal activities happening, we have tools to address that. Even if this ordinance truly does end in March, these types of ordinances can set people back who are unsheltered. They can damage trust that we've been working to build, and there also needs to be a plan and an alternative for people to be moved into if we are forcing people to move along. There are more effective ways to deal with the issues that we have, to reduce and end homelessness, such as what the city is already doing in adding Behavioral Health Officer, adding an additional social worker. We understand that being confronted and seeing unsheltered homelessness in the downtown area is very difficult, and no one should have to live without shelter in our community, but there's more effective ways to solve this problem and address the issues that we have. Again, we understand that on the face value, this is about alcohol, but this is also a very targeted, specific, and temporary ordinance. This proposal gets very specific about who can and who cannot consume alcohol in public spaces. So we urge you to consider the deeper, longer-term impacts, potentially unintended consequences of policies like this, and how this could impact our unsheltered population.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on 24-624, so I'll take a motion and a second to put on the floor.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. I have councilmember Flom, followed by Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this ordinance, a concern that I have is the blanket nature of it, and so one of the things when reading through this is understanding that, yes, this stems from a particular issue that we've been seeing downtown. However, the concern that I have is that it is essentially telling people in other parts of the city that if, you know, you want to go, say you have a Thanksgiving football game, you have family that goes out there, and they want to throw the ball around, and somebody brings a few beers, right? This is something that people have done. I know people who do this, and so a concern that I have is extending this out to the entire city. So I will move to amend this to just be Opera House Square for the duration of this temporary ordinance.
Second.
Now that there's a motion and a second, we can only talk about the amendment, and we can't talk about the full intent behind it anymore. So motion and second for amending to just Opera House Square is on the floor only. Mr. Nichols, did you want to speak to the amendment or the whole thing?
I think I could do both at the same time.
For yours?
And I actually have a couple of questions, so that might actually help clarify both, so that would work. But I had an exchange earlier with the chief and with Lynn earlier, just to talk about what mechanisms we have today to address the issues that this ordinance could also address, and I guess maybe my initial concern here was we are eliminating the ability to drink in a public park, but we're not eliminating the ability to drink in Oshkosh. And so I think our concerns really are what happens after someone consumes alcohol. That's the public nuisance element to me, and so I'm hoping that either Lynn or chief, you can speak to some of the other mechanisms we have to address the problems that come when someone is over-served, whether that's in a public park or in a bar.
You or me?
Go ahead.
Okay. So essentially, the problems that occur is what I'm hearing is the question. We have folks who are urinating on the sides of buildings, they're defecating, they're also fighting with each other. Their inhibitions start to get diminished, because if you've partaken of alcohol, you know that you become freer to do what you want to do, and you feel like the things that you thought you should do, but you shouldn't do it because it's wrong, then you do it. These all occur. We have business owners within the downtown area that have witnessed a lot of these occurrences, and we get multiple emails, multiple requests to do something to help this, and council's certainly working towards that solution, and we do have the new homeless outreach team that we're going to be standing up in the next several months. This is just one tool that allows us to interact with folks and have conversation, not banning them from parks in no way, shape, or form. It's simply saying, this is acceptable behavior within the park, and we'd like for you not to do it. There is a misnomer out there that if you're drunk in public, then we can arrest you or cite you for that. That's not the case. We actually have a community care function. If somebody's incapacitated, they're passed out, they can't take care of themselves, by state statute, we will take them into protective custody and deliver them to the hospital, where they sober up, and then the hospital sends them on their way. So there is no, there is no fine for being drunk in public. There is no violation of law for being overly served. It's the actions that you do when you are overly served that create community concerns.
That's very helpful, and I think that that point is, while I'm going to vote no on the ordinance, either as amended or otherwise, because I think what we're trying to monitor and what we're trying to control is behavior after people are served alcohol. I think we should be using our resources at the city level to identify the complex issue that is homelessness, as Ms. Erickson said, but I think where I'm concerned is that we are going to start using our police force to have touch points and conversations with these people that are living and drinking, potentially, in public parks, and that is going to hurt our ability later to use our new services that are housed within the police department to actually communicate with these people. One bad interaction with the police department may make someone hesitant to have a good interaction with the police department. I don't think this solves the issue that we're trying to solve, so again, I'll be a no here. Thanks.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Ms. Esslinger.
Yeah, I guess I have thought about this one quite a bit, too, and I guess I prefaced my statements with, I understand the business communities, I think, worry, and I know that they want movement, and they want movement now, but I think, maybe what Lindsay was saying a little bit, homelessness is a very sticky issue, and it doesn't solve itself overnight. So I've been struggling a little bit with this one, knowing that we have an ability to try to make the business community feel a little better downtown, but also to a little bit of what Councilman Nichols said, I do feel like we are almost like double policing here. I mean, really, the actions that we're trying to not have happened are urinating, defecating, fighting, things like that, that I think we can charge and fine people for, but not being able to drink in a public space or in a park, I don't know if I can get behind, and thank you for making the amendment, but I kind of thought about that, too, originally, if we could just make it to a small area, but I still, I'd like a further discussion, but I think at this point, I don't think I could be in favor of banning the drinking in any of our parks right now.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just speaking to the amendment, I understand the thought of just Opera House Square, because that's where the main problem is. However, I think if you define that area only, then you're just moving the problem down the street, and so, you know, we have a problem with business owners, or business owners have a problem, and so we shuffle it down the street, so for someone else to have a problem. So again, just, I'll probably speak after this vote, but I think if we're going to do that, it should be citywide. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Larson.
Just speaking to this amendment, last year, the problem was the Lee Champeau Theater terrace and parking lot that we got all the complaints about, and this year, several of the people moved to downtown, so much like Councilman Esslinger said, I'll be a no on the amendment. I will say more when we get back to the ordinance.
Councilmember Larson.
Sure, I can speak just to the amendment first as well. I'm a yes on the amendment, but based on precedent and procedure, and for the following motion that doesn't involve this directly yet, but it will. So there's a misnomer in almost everybody I've talked to about this. Most people don't know that you can drink in parks already. People think that you can drink in Opera House Square because of Dora. Dora sets great precedent for this just being Opera House Square, because Dora is not why you can drink at Opera House Square, you can drink in every park, and we already do amend Dora twice a year to make sure that specific bad behavior doesn't happen during Dora. So that's both spring and fall pub crawl, Dora is lifted as a matter of precedent so that bad things don't happen during that area. So I completely agree with Jacob that limiting this to where there are disturbances and to only the disturbing people is the point here, so I'm a yes on this part of it.
Good point. All right. Any other comments or discussion on the amendment? Mr. Nichols?
I'm just going to say, I think originally I said I was going to be no on both. I'll be yes on this amendment, because I don't think we should be doing this, and so if we're going to do it, I would like to limit it to just one park. So I'll be a yes here. Thanks.
Seeing nothing else, if you'll take the roll on 24-624, the amendment to 24-624.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
No.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
No.
Muggawar?
Aye.
That carried four-three.
Now we're back to the resolution as amended on the floor. Deputy Mayor.
All right. Kind of an interesting one for me, because I'm not a consumer of alcohol, and nobody in my immediate family is, and if you brought me a clean bill that said no alcohol in any of the parks with no sunset date, I might vote for it. But I'm not here to create ordinances for me, I'm here to create ordinance of the city, and I think this is not a good use of it. Public urination, public defecation, and disorderly conduct are already illegal, from my understanding. We already have, you know, tickets for those. The alcohol use that predicates them, yes, makes them more likely, but now we're getting into a place where I don't think serves our population, especially the unhoused population. You know, we took out all the other parks, but I've been hearing from people like, you know, I can't even carry a six-pack when I'm going to go fishing and things like that, so now this is just going to be the downtown area, which is obviously targeting our unhoused population. I don't think this is their crack choice, and I've actually been driving past the Opera House Square almost nightly to see who's out there and daily, and they have already, many of them have already moved to other locations. And the question that I asked Chief Smith, I think I've asked him probably 40 times in our many conversations through this, is it feels like we keep wanting to move them from here, you know, move along, move along, move along. We don't have a place that's safe for them to stay during the day, whether it's alcohol or otherwise, so I'm going to be a no on this.
Councilmember Larson.
Yeah, so this is as torn as I've been on any issue so far. I agree 100% with what Ms. Erickson said, and we know this, we've talked about this before. That's the kind of work that I'm most involved with and the kind of thing I care about the most. I also live a block from Opera House Square. Both my businesses are one block from Opera House Square. I'm a bid board member, I'm a CVB board member, those offices are a block from Opera House Square. I know we've all gotten lots of correspondence on this. I've gotten more correspondence on this issue than any other that has come before us at all. So I'm true to my word, this is not about what I want when I'm up here, this is about what the public wants from me. This is not perfect in any way, shape, or form. I'm very reluctantly a yes on it, but that's just because I see this as, there are issues in Opera House Square that are not driven just by homeless people. This is not a law that targets people sleeping on a bench or sitting on a bench. This is a way to curb really disturbing and bad behavior that's probably not even driven by people who don't have a place to stay. Secondarily, based on the work that I care about that Lindsay's doing and lots of us care about, this is a way to have a proactive conversation about a much bigger issue, and this is us saying that we're not going to criminalize sleeping on a bench, and we're not going to kick the people out who are sleeping on a bench, but it's one tool. So I'm a yes on this. It's extremely reluctantly, but it's based on not what I want personally, based on what I hear from feedback of the people who live and work downtown.
Councilman Esslinger, followed by Councilmember Flom.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last several months, I've been hearing the issue of homelessness and the problems that are being created, and I know the council has received emails from business owners that are at their wits' end, losing business. We had great discussion with the chief at budget time regarding this issue, and chief asked for and was granted an officer to be downtown to handle this issue, and there's no silver bullet that solves this issue. I think there are many approaches that have to be taken, and we're going to take those. So I said at a few council meetings ago, I said I was frustrated. I keep hearing about this homelessness. What are we doing? Are we doing anything? And so it takes a while for that train to get started and running down the tracks, and so I think the engine's starting, and we're starting to run down the tracks. This is something that was, I believe, derived from the chief. If I were him, I'd be very angry and very frustrated that the council wants to give him some of the tools to help be a part of the solution, but don't want to give him all the tools. And while I'm not really happy with this ordinance change, I understand it. It's now essentially December, I don't think there are going to be too many people in the parks going to have a picnic and drinking beer, or whatever they're going to be drinking. So I don't see any problem with that. There is a sunset clause on it, the end of March, I believe. There is a sunset clause on it, the end of March, I believe, so it will be, it will be vacated at that time. But we clearly have a problem, and there are, there are many things that we can do. This is one of them, it doesn't even cost us anything. So, you know, the police just, they cannot win in this situation. They're either placating, and we've been told they've been placating the, the homeless and, and the activities that are going down, on down there, and then we've heard that they're criminalizing it. So, the fact of the matter is, they have a job, they have a job to do, they want to be a part of the, of the solution. This, I think, is part of the solution. I wish we could do it citywide, because again, I don't want someone else to have this. If we're coming back in another couple of months, hey, the problem is down the street now, now we got to change that. So, I'm not happy with this, I don't, you know, but again, sometimes when you want to solve problems, you have to do things that aren't, aren't comfortable, and I'm not comfortable with it, but I understand it, and I want to give the police department a good tool to be a part of the solution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. When we talk about issues like homelessness in our community, you need to address it in the same way that you've been addressing the public health crisis surrounding opioids, and a lot of these are interlinked. And it's a four-legged stool, in my opinion, enforcement, treatment, housing, and utilizing public-private partnerships where you can. And so, in order for our community to successfully overcome these issues, get people off the street, get them into housing, you need to utilize all four of these stool legs, and enforcement is one of those. We can have a larger and broader conversation about treatment and housing, working with our nonprofit community, I think those are all very important conversations to have, but enforcement is one of those. I've been hearing from a lot of people in the downtown community, whether they be business owners, people who work at downtown businesses, or people who just like going to Opera House Square. And so, while this isn't perfect, I am in support of this ordinance, and I look forward to broader conversations surrounding solving the homelessness issue constructively.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. I have a, I have a question about enforcement for this specific issue, so I know the chief will walk up here, but I, I guess I just want to confirm with, with Len before, before the chief walks up, but we do already have ordinances or criminal statutes under Wisconsin law on the books for public urination, disorderly conduct, noise, and battery, is that right?
Right. Public urination is a city ordinance, disorderly conduct, battery, what was the last one?
Uh, noise.
Noise. Noise and public urination are ordinances only, disorderly conduct and battery could be either an ordinance citation or a criminal charge, depending on the severity of the particular conduct.
Great, thank you. And Chief, I know we've gone back and, back and forth on this issue, I just, when we talk about enforcement, I, I know that there was a conversation we had where a conversation is what, is what we're looking to do related to this, and I appreciate that, and I think anytime we could, we can talk, it's a positive thing, and earlier I said, a bad interaction can prevent a good interaction. I imagine that our police department is, is always striving for a good interaction. I, I guess I'm just curious, though, if, if I take a bottle of Jack Daniels out to the park under this ordinance, and I'm drinking it out of the bottle, I imagine it's going to be pretty easy to walk up to me and say, you can't drink in a public park. But if I put that bottle in a, in a brown paper bag, or if I put it in another container, how will our police department actually enforce this ordinance?
Well, getting into the specifics of each interaction, let me preface that with this, you're absolutely right, this is more about education, it's also preventing folks from walking into criminal charges that may occur later on, disorderly conducts, fights, things such as that. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to intervene in those beforehand, in simple conversations, saying, hey, you can't drink in the park, this is not the place to do this, we need you to, to not do that anymore. That's the type of conversation the officers have with folks all the time on different ordinances. We, we, we generally give a lot of warnings on a lot of stuff. We don't write tickets to everybody on everything right out of the gate, we give a lot of warnings. And we have repeat people who, if they, if they have been given several warnings, we, we know who they are, our officers who work at that particular district, they know who they are, that if they've gave them several warnings, then they're probably issuing a ticket just to get their attention and say, hey, you can't do this, this is not acceptable for our community, no matter what the ordinance is. It, it could be this ordinance, it could be, it could be any other ordinance that you could think of that we have, it would be playing your music loud, whether it be, you know, shouting and screaming, hey, calm down, it's okay, let's, let's, let's deescalate this a little bit. But we have the opportunity to have an interaction that is based upon a violation of an ordinance. It doesn't mean somebody's getting a ticket, it means I can have a conversation with you, and you probably need to listen to, and then hopefully we can correct some behavior before it grows into other behavior.
And that makes a ton of sense. I guess maybe, though, my question specifically, how will we know they're drinking alcohol? And how will we be able to have that conversation if it's not apparent?
Well, we won't know if it's not apparent.
Yeah.
We're not going to search everybody's cup, we're not going to search everybody's brown paper bag. Somebody sipping a bottle, something out of a brown paper bag certainly is indicative of somebody who's probably drinking alcohol, and the officer may have articulable suspicion to, to have a conversation with them, and again, they're going to have a conversation with them. This isn't acceptable.
Sure. And, and I guess just a question, now that the ordinance is limited just to Opera House Square, are you supportive of the ordinance?
Absolutely. Any, any tool that we can give to the officers to have positive interaction, although that may seem counterintuitive, but it means I'm having a conversation with, with Kelly, because she's having issues, and, well, I want to have a conversation with her and what I can do, and she starts to walk away from me, but we're still going to have a conversation, there's a reason why I'm there, there's a reason why I'm in, in her presence space right now.
Yeah, and could you not have the conversation without the ordinance?
She can walk away and keep on going.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no legal constraint. Right now, it's, if, if, if I have some, some ordinance or some criminal violation, I have a reason to say, no, you have to stop and listen to me, at least listen to what I have to say.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I know your heart is absolutely in the right place, both in terms of interacting with these people, that, that we would be talking to in Opera House Square, and then also the community at large. So, I, I appreciate you, and I appreciate you answering my questions. I'm still a no on this ordinance, because I do believe that we have other tools at our disposal to address homelessness, and I think this is targeted, because the only thing we've been talking about up here is homelessness, but it hasn't been talked, we haven't talked about behaviors in public parks. So, I'm still a no here, and, but I do appreciate you answering my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Deputy Mayor.
I, I also, really, I, I do believe the chief and the police are definitely, their hearts are in the right place, and I think you guys always want what's best for our community, so please don't take any comments that I make thinking that you guys want anything less than what's best for the community. You guys have been a huge advocate in trying to be partners in solving homelessness. I, I do think this one is a little bit of, we're trying to fix the symptom, not, not cure the disease right now. I maybe get a little bit off-topic here, but some of the, the emails that I, that I've gotten have been to the effect of, oh, how, how could families go in our downtown when we have people like this around and go in there? And I, I would like to push back a little bit on that, I think we, as a community, have to own our spaces a little bit. I, as many people up here know, I'm a huge advocate of our downtown, I'm in our downtown a lot. I have off on Fridays, so my son and I will frequently go on a stroller, go downtown, we will play in Opera House Square, he'll run around. I think community being together and being used to each other is a good thing, regardless of what station in life you come from. So, not that that's a solution by any means, but I, I do think that we, as a community, have to start to accept folks a little bit, regardless of how they look or where they're sitting, so that's a little bit of my pulpit right now, but I, I will be a no on this ordinance, but I, I do want to thank the police and the bid for coming up with ideas for this. If, if there are other ideas, even if I oppose them, I, I certainly want to see ideas, I certainly want to see people talk, continue to talk about this issue.
Deputy Mayor.
You haven't talked yet, so if you want to, okay.
I'm good.
Sorry, Chief, I have one more for you. I, I almost was like, hey, wait, wait. My concern for this now is we're limiting it to one park for four months, how can we possibly know if this is an effective ordinance with, so if we, we've all agreed, for the most part, they have seeking, they, they are now seeking shelter elsewhere, they're not spending as much time there. So, if we don't have touchpoints, does that mean it's, it's successful and we should extend it? Like, that's what my biggest concern, concern now is we're creating something that, how do, how do we even know if this was the right thing when we're, when we're done? Well, we don't. What we are is we're, we're creating an opportunity to, to say that, to our business owners, that we're going to do something. And whether, whether, whether we have a, a data point that says we wrote a bunch of tickets, or we have a data point that said we interacted with people who were drinking in the park, and we said, don't do that no more, it, it won't truly say whether or not it worked or not, but this truly is a stopgap. I believe that once we get our homeless outreach program stood up, and we have regular interaction going, then we will probably limit even more activity that occurs in, in our downtown area as a whole. But I can't get the homeless unit stood up in a timely manner. This will get us to that place, to where we have an opportunity for the officers working in the street to do something, until such time as we can get our homeless outreach team stood up and actually working within the community. I don't foresee this going on past March 31st, but we, we, it gives us an opportunity to kind of slow things down, and yes, they have slowed down a bit, but we don't know when they may spike back up. So, it just gives us another tool to work with, and I don't foresee this going past March 31st. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
I don't want to go in front of you, you didn't go yet.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm always patient.
Councilmember Bilo, I had a question for you, based on your last question. So, again, I'm, I'm reluctantly yes on all this, I'm a yes on principle and practice more than the issue at hand, to a degree, right? Just because there is, this is less targeted than it may appear, because again, we do the same thing with Dora and pub crawl, we prevent bad behavior by saying this thing doesn't exist at that specific instance at the specific time. So, my reluctance is what's making me ask you this question. I'm more interested in this now, because we set a, another precedent where this can be a tool that can be helpful when this happens again, and to Chief's point, we don't know when that would happen again. Does this make more sense to you to revisit if that happens again? Because I'd be fine with that, too. I, I hate laying things over, I hate putting this off, but I don't know, to your point, that any benefit's going to come from this now, because I, I'm in Opera House Square all day, every day, not literally, but I'm through there, and there's been nothing bad happening there for a minute. There were lots of bad things happening there previously, and again, to lots of discussions here, I'm not sure it was homeless people causing those problems, I think it was other people showing up and partaking in disturbing behavior that made bad things happen, but that, we just don't know. So, if you'd be amenable to this being a topic that we've now discussed, that makes some sense, that we can use as a tool, or we can discuss as a tool if it comes up again, that would, would help me, I'm being selfish, that would help me not vote yes for something that I'm not in love with.
Sure. To answer your question, I can tell you that I'm a no vote on this today. If it came, you know, if in May, we're seeing the problem spike up again, and then this comes back before, I, I won't tell you how I'm going to vote on it in May. You know, because by then, we're going to have the new unit, hopefully, implemented and up and running in the office downtown, and I know that's, you know, everything takes a, takes steps, but I, so the best answer I can give you is I'm a no.
I know. I actually thought you were going to.
And I actually thought you were going to ask me a different question, I thought you were going to say, you know, would I be in favor if we, if we struck the sunset out? And, and that's the other thought I had, is like, okay, so if we think this is the right way to go, and we think that this is really needed, then, you know, should we be discussing not having it sunset in March, when we know that the bulk of the problems are going to be, you know, when it's nicer weather out? And, and then I, you know, had to do some real quick math about, you know, at the live at lunch, if they want to have, if it's a 90-degree day and people want to have a spotted cow down at, you know, the, I don't want to say no to that either, so. So, what I can tell you is I'm a, I'm a no today, and if it comes back before me in the future, I will consider it then.
And I appreciate that. I'd like it to never come back in the future, because I'd like this to be something that has been addressed by then, but I'm, I'm looking for, selfishly, for a way out of something that I'm not comfortable voting yes on.
Anybody else?
I appreciate a lot of the points that Councilmember Nichols made, actually, with, even though he's, he's on the no side, and I'm leaning towards the yes, it's the exact same reasons, it just, I happen to lean a little bit. Chief, I do have a question for you, I'm sorry, I made you walk all the way back there. I may be sorry, not sorry, I don't know. I may have noticed you walking back there, and I should have said it sooner. I'll get to my, my point in a, in a second, but a lot of good questions. And from all of council, by the way, this, it's, it's not an easy topic, and it shouldn't be easy, and I appreciate that you're all willing to actually talk about it, and not just vote yes or no, and, and hope it goes away. You said something, and, and one of the other councilmembers did too, by doing this, is there a possibility that this is actually going to set back your homeless outreach efforts before you even start?
No, we're already doing, we're already, we're already doing interactions with folks in the community, as, as we've indicated, we're, we're sent, we're out there with cops, we're saying, hey, here's some help for you, here are resources that are available to you. When we stand up the outreach team, we're going to be digging deeper into the needs, and as I've shared with you all during our, our budget meetings, there's going to be a, a real question and answer time with, what, what is it that you really need to help you get out of homelessness, to help you get that one step up that you need? And, you know, we, we really want to help guide that discussion, and using the county resources along the way, having the opportunity to collect that data as to what's going on. We are already working towards those relationships, and frankly, folks on the street respect when one of the officers says, hey, you can't do that. And we, we say it kind of in that way, we don't, we don't say, hey, you stop doing that, we say, hey, you can't do that, and they respect what we say. It's, it's a matter of what you can't do.
And I in no way, I got to clarify, in no way meant to infer that you're not doing any homeless outreach efforts. I know, and we know that, in fact, the Oshkosh Police Department is doing the most outreach efforts of, of probably anybody with, under the city umbrella here. And just was worried about that specific team that we're going to put downtown, and, and even just setting them back even a step, from being able to, to hit the ground running and make positive impacts, you know, the moment we put them down there. And so, that was the intent of my question, but also to your point, and a few others, we're not, we're, we're not any other community, we're Oshkosh, and it's about what's doing best for us right now, in this short moment. You know, I understand things go on in different parts of the state, different parts of the country, this is about trying to address right here, right now, in this community for a little bit, and to see if it works, to see if it helped, it's a tool in the tool bag. What I appreciate most is I have full faith and full confidence in the men and women of the OPD to use their best discretion that they use daily, in and out, in every interaction, to determine the best possible outcome for that situation. And I have no doubt, zero, that OPD will not continue that. So, using their discretion at, you know, when right, it's just another tool in their, in their tool bag for me, and that's why I'm leaning towards the yes side, so. And Councilmember Nichols is, is now going to go. Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, Mayor, and, and I agree that OPD will always use its best discretion, that they use daily, that was your phrase, to, to talk to everyone in Oshkosh, not just our homeless population. I, I think maybe my point here is that we're talking a lot about homeless people up here, and, and I think that, I just want to be very clear, that my opinion of this ordinance is it's going to make homeless people sober in our parks, potentially, it's not going to assist with the issue of homelessness. I don't think this does anything to actually address the root cause, it just gives us an opportunity for our police department to talk to people where they can't walk away, is, is what I've heard tonight, and, and I don't think that's a good solution here. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to answer a question that I've gotten from a lot of people of, why is so much of our homelessness outreach being tasked to OPD? And, and I want to do some full fidelity here, and call out to Chief Smith. Chris Larson and I were in many, many meetings throughout the year on dealing with homelessness issues, and in many communities, they have this beautiful, like, resource chart, where if this happens, call this department, if this happens, call this department. And so, we mocked up our own in, in Oshkosh, and Chief Smith can, Chief Smith can tell you, unfortunately, every answer was, call OPD. And it was either, call OPD, not emergency, or call 911. And there wasn't another entity that stepped forward that had the bandwidth and the energy that they could put into dealing with the rise in homelessness that we've seen downtown here. So I wanted to call out Chief Smith, but also make it clear that the reason why we are involving our police department is this, is we didn't have another choice. And I know that Chief Smith and, and the other police department officers that came in, they weren't asking for it, they weren't like, give us this, give us this, give us this, it was who can take this, and there wasn't another option. So I, I wanted to make that clear here tonight, that, that the reason why we have to involve our police department is this, is right now, you are the outreach team, and, and until the community has a better answer, I appreciate that, too.
Mr. Flum.
To kind of provide a little bit more of depth on the outreach team, the work with Winnebago County Human Services is going to be absolutely critical. This is the warm handoff that we're doing to an agency that is better equipped to handle homelessness than city government is. Under state statute, the county handles public health and human services with some exceptions for public health, but in Oshkosh, that's how it works here. I have full faith that the Oshkosh Police Department will do its job in that regard and work with human services. I'm very proud of the plan that has been put together, and so I trust that that'll continue in the future. Thank you.
Anything else from council?
Say, Kirk, if you'll take the roll on 24-624 as amended, yes, as amended.
As amended.
Hold on.
Oh, Councilmember.
We have to move to waive the rules, correct, or?
No, this was.
Nope, this is the second reading.
We chose not to waive the rules last week.
Oh, that's right.
And we chose not to amend the.
I just remember reading it in the report to waive the rules. Taken out.
We kept it, we didn't delete that, good catch.
If you'll proceed with the ordinance as amended.
Stevenson.
No.
Nichols.
No.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Beal.
No.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried four three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, City Manager.
If I can just make a suggestion to the council, given the fact you've just discussed this issue, the Dora item is a few items down the agenda, if you wanted to just kind of consolidate the discussion, I think you're pretty warmed up to it, it would be appropriate to suspend the rules, so that would be my suggestion if you want to just keep going on this topic.
Sound a bad suggestion, council? Are you interested in moving up 24-632 to take that up immediately ahead of the new ordinances that are just are being read the first time?
Yes.
Sure.
Motion.
I'll need a, I will need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Waive the rules and alter the, the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Somebody down there. If you'll take the roll on waiving the rules and moving up 24-632.
Who did the first motion on that?
Beal.
Okay, thank you. Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
So we'll put resolution 24-632, this is amend approved designated outdoor refreshment area, Dora, for the Downtown Business Improvement District Area 2425 to remove city park property and sidewalk adjoining Opera House Square Park. I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, and Mr. Larson goes first.
Same points of clarity from me, just important to point out that Dora is not why people can drink at Opera House Square, and again, Dora is already suspended twice a year to prevent bad things from happening in it, so removing Dora from this part of the park is merely a formality, and that Dora lays over the ordinance that allows drinking in the park already. So this is just purely formality type stuff, it doesn't mean if bad things happen, I keep explaining this, like, this is an issue with 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning at the sun dial, this is not an issue with 6:00 p.m. in front of Satori. If it were an issue at 6:00 p.m. in front of Satori, this would be a different discussion with Dora as well. So I think this is the right move, and it's just formality, removing one overlay from the other one. Hope that makes sense.
Any, nope, you're okay, Councilmember Stevenson.
So I mean, with the ordinance that was just approved, I mean, if we don't approve this, it's kind of in direct conflict, right?
Is that?
It's a lin question.
I don't think it's in direct conflict, but it, the Dora would still allow like the drinking on the sidewalks around the park.
Sure.
You've passed it, it says not in the park, but, so it doesn't really conflict, but it doesn't go with it either.
Okay.
I mean, you could, you could walk around the park on the sidewalk.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, and if we approve the resolution here, is Dora extended into the park?
No.
No.
Still not, but we can still drink around the park.
This would include the adjoining, the sidewalk adjoining.
This includes the sidewalk.
So if someone were to walk into the park, and we approve this, then the police would have a conversation with that person if they have alcohol in their hand?
I would defer to the chief, but yes, they could.
Chief is getting his steps in.
Yeah, sorry, Chief.
Yes.
So to be clear, currently with Dora, within the ordinance itself, the city manager I have the opportunity to suspend any activity within Dora without council action. This just formalizes council's ability to say, yes, we support this. Currently within parks, I'm sorry, within parking lots, they're not included in Dora, you can't walk to your car with a beer, you can't take a mixed drink to, you know, somewhere, you can't come down Church Street, it's not included in Dora. This is just council, within the Dora, if we didn't have a Dora ordinance, we wouldn't be talking about this, but because this is a piece of Dora, this is just council acknowledging what we already, have already done.
Okay, thank you. I see no other buttons pushed, if you'll take the roll on 24-632.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we're going back to new ordinances, these, we have seven tonight that we anticipate no action on, these will be first readings and would come back at the next meeting for discussion and action. Ordinance 24-625, approved request to annexed to the city from the town of Oshkosh, 4434 Islandview Drive, Plan Commission recommends approval, I don't have anyone registered on that one. Ordinance 24-626, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code to update parking regulations on South Main Street between the Fox River and West 9th Avenue, Transportation Committee recommends approval, again, no one registered on that one. Ordinance 24-627, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code to extend no parking regulations on the west side of Dove Street, Transportation, Transportation Committee recommends approval, no one registered. Ordinance 24-628, amend section 27-14 of the municipal code, truck routes designated, Transportation Committee recommends approval. Ordinance 24-629, amend section 27-35 in appendix 27B of the Oshkosh Municipal Code, pertaining to parking regulations within city-owned parking lots in relation to the construction of the new East 9th Avenue Parking Lot, Transportation Committee recommends approval, and Mr. Larson, as far as yours.
Question, easy one on this one, do you think we'll have our discussion on overnight parking by the time this one comes back to us? Because there's a provision in this that says we're going to disallow overnight parking in this new parking lot, we're going to get the signs all ready for it, I'd rather not get the signs ready for it if we decide to allow overnight parking in that parking lot?
The short answer is no, because the Transportation Committee's taken up the parking ordinance at their December meeting, which will be after your December 10th meeting.
Got it, so we won't make signs, we might make signs if we say yes at the next meeting, so we can discuss at the next meeting?
I don't think we'll be rushing to put, post the signs.
Just checking, that's a good enough answer for me, thank you.
And that's a, thank you for pointing that out.
Next up, ordinance 24-630, amend portions of chapter four of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to alcohol beverages, license investigations, granting and issuance of premise and operator licenses. Councilmember Larson, again.
I'm sorry to press my button on so many, we expect no motion things, but this one, I would like to move, we postpone this indefinitely.
Second.
Discussion on the postponement of indefinitely, and then I'm going to get some clarification on the indefinitely part.
Same.
Any?
And it may not be me, Attorney Lawrence, I'll defer to you if you want to start with this, I know we had a conversation about some clarity here, I, you know what my concerns are, but I think we should probably get the general watching public to lay the land to some degree, because this, the memo and the ordinance don't make abundantly clear what we're talking about here.
So as to postponing indefinitely, your rules say if you're going to lay over, you should lay over to a date certain. If you just want to defeat it, then just vote it down. If you want to have clarification, I can attempt to clarify it, I sent some information out already.
I can, I can, sorry to interrupt the button, my, my intention is to postpone indefinitely, not any of those other options, I would like this to not be read a second time, because I see a detriment to reading it a first time and a second time. So that's what postpone indefinitely is for, so we can, we can make sure we don't introduce bad policy that the press will write about and deter people from doing business in our city.
I think you could make a motion to just withdraw it, again, your rules just don't, they say if you're going to postpone it, lay it over, you should lay it over to a date certain, so I would probably make the motion to just withdraw it then.
Well, I don't know that I have that purview, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not as familiar with our rules as I am with Robert's rules, and postpone indefinitely is definitely a thing, at least as far as I know, but you know better than I do, I'm not going to argue with you about.
Right, your rules, the council rules say.
So we don't have postpone indefinitely as an option in the council rules?
Not in the council rules. We say you lay it over to a certain date, to be honest, it's, it goes back a number of years, because it gets lost in the clerk's keeping track of things.
That would be the intent, so, yeah, the, the intent would be to make it get lost.
But if he moves to withdraw.
Withdraw.
Even better.
Move to withdraw.
I will, I'll amend, but I have to, can I withdraw my previous motion?
You would need to, as well as Councilmember Flum would need to withdraw his second.
I'll withdraw, but I have a question for, for council, and, not for council, but for Lynn.
So why don't you ask that question before?
Just, that's a point of clarification, I'll.
I'm sorry I started this.
Okay. So Flum, yours, if you want to ask a question.
When something is not listed in our rules, doesn't it revert to Robert's rules?
Right.
Am I correct with that?
Not necessarily, it says, your rules say you can, again, Robert's rules aren't written for this kind of body, so we have your own council rules, and then our rules say if something isn't addressed, you can look to Robert's rules, but this is something that's specifically addressed, it says.
But you just said it wasn't specifically addressed.
They'll be laying over to a.
Right, but indefinite postponement is not, so unless if that restricts us, okay, fine, all right.
I mean, I don't want to lay it over to a particular date, if you want to choose a date instead, I can.
Withdraw, just to withdraw.
Fine. Jacob, you withdraw your second?
Yes.
I'll withdraw my motion, and instead move to withdraw this.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to withdraw, where am I? Ordinance 24-630. Mr. Nichols.
Councilmember Larson, will you tell us why?
I will, I'm moving to withdraw, but I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to paint the picture incorrectly with a brush that has bias from me, so I'd like to know why we're discussing this at all, and that's the questions I've been asking, but if you want me to summarize it, I will, I just don't want to be unfair to the subject, because you know more about it than I do, because city staff initiated this, not council. So I don't want to step on its toes by laying the groundwork for what this means, because again, I had to ask what you meant when I read this, because it didn't make sense to me. And we're on the same-ish page, I'd rather address Councilmember Nichols to your point of why I'd like with this withdrawn, after we can discuss why it's being proposed at all, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay.
So in 2023, the legislature passed some comprehensive updates to the alcohol beverage licensing, and just all of the alcohol beverage laws for the state of Wisconsin. When that passed, staff started reviewing them, and we looked at our ordinances in particular and said, hey, is there anything we need to update, change, review? We identified three general areas we think that we, the city code should be updated in. One is to put in specific criteria for the review of license applications into the ordinance. There's provisions in the, the statute that require you to review, to do certain things by ordinance, that this would address that. We want to look at our zoning code, there's some new terminology, and make our, our zoning code match the, the current, the updated terminology. And the third thing is to put in a, a process for review of full-service retail outlets, so distilleries, wineries, and breweries, for example, can have separate outlets from their production premises where they can serve alcohol beverages for onsite consumption or carry out, and so basically like, like a Class B tavern license. We wanted to get the, our ordinances in place so that if we have somebody who comes forward with one of those that the municipality does have to approve, we've got that process in place so that we don't have delays, we know, everybody knows what we're doing, an applicant can look at it and go, this is, this is what, how it's going to go, staff knows what, who has to review it, and we can make those approvals and bring them to you efficiently. This, I should note, this, this specific ordinance is just the first step, it is the one to establish the, the criteria for, for license reviews in the ordinance, to make that clear. The zoning would come next, and, well, the zoning and the full-service retail process would be the next, the follow-up ones to that, but they kind of rely on, well, the full-service one relies on this to some extent, so.
I think the other part of it, Lynn, is you said you went to the league city attorney's conference, and this was discussed as an issue statewide, correct?
Correct, because it is a, it was, it's due to a change in the state statute, so it's not an Oshkosh specific thing, yep.
And that's all correct, I can, I can weigh back in now, and Lynn, I appreciate that, that makes perfect sense. We have the same understanding, the difference of opinion that I have, and I think we, well, it's not a difference of opinion, we agree, what Act 73 does is create special provisions for FSRs, and then a new license that comes from the DOR, which is a DAB, that comes before the municipal, you have to issue one, there are two others that only come from the state.
Correct, and one of those, it's, so for FSRs, the full-service retail, on a production premises, the municipality doesn't have any approval over. For FSRs that are not on the production premises, there is a process for municipal approval.
Yep.
And you have to apply the same criteria to those, those municipal approvals that you do for every other licensee, and those have to be established by ordinance.
Sort of, and that's where we can debate that when we get to that point, we're not there now at all, because none of these things exist currently, and that's part of my problem with this, but the issue I have with this is, this is an FSR-specific issue primarily. What the ask of this resolution is for, and why I want it, why I want it withdrawn, is that city staff is asking to apply this to every Class B liquor license we issue in the city of Wiscon, in the city of Oshkosh, and those two things don't intertwine unless they have to. We're going to make them intertwine just so we can protect against something theoretical that might happen in the future with regards to an FSR.
I guess the other thing I should say, this, this is the process we currently apply. We, the ordinance right now just doesn't walk you through step by step, and doesn't tell, it says, the police will, you know, we.
It's very specific, yes.
It's not very specific in my mind, it says the clerk receives an application, and she sends it to the police department, the fire department, the health department, and that's kind of where our ordinance ends. This gets more specific, it says, we send it to the police department, and here's what they're going to review it for, they're going to review any police contacts and make a recommendation, the fire department, and I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but they, they, they're going to do their fire inspection, and it has to comply with whatever provision of the code. Health department's going to do their inspection, and it tells you what they're looking at, and that's, that's the difference, it's not any different than what we do now, it's just making it clear in the ordinance of what we're looking at.
If that's what this said, and if that's what the red line version of the, the ordinance you were proposing said, I would be totally okay with that, even though I disagree, because I have liquor licenses, I know it's hard, we go through the process, it's not easy to do the fire and the health and the police part, it's already way more prohibitive, prohibitive than, for instance, opening a bank, it just is. There are more laws there already, and more hoops to jump through already. The part you keep skipping is that in this resolution as proposed, you are also asking that the second someone applies for a liquor license, you involve zoning and planning inspections.
Not inspections.
And that's one step too far, all right, zoning and planning.
Just zoning.
That's fine, still too far, because that doesn't apply to any other industry or other license, my, the best analogy I've come up with, and I explained this to Carl at one point, this is like if Carl goes to get his CDL, and he goes to the DMV, and because he applies for his CDL, you go, hey, Carl, we need to look at your garage. That's not how this should work, you don't need to add extra layers to this, and it's a, it's a disadvantage to every other, compared to every other city, that we make this more difficult than they might. I get what you're saying, and I get what you're guarding against, it's just so theoretical, and involving zoning is something that's already, already difficult, I don't even want to discuss, because people will talk about it, it'll make it harder.
We do look at zoning when a business locates in the city of Oshkosh, and we, it, it, it was not specifically referenced in Chapter 4, but it was also, that is also something that was already being done.
So that was my other question. Why do you feel like you need to add it to just this part if it already exists?
That is actually a recommendation that is coming from, because the statute now says you have to have, you have to apply the same criteria that's established by code for every other license, and it has to be done by ordinance. The recommendation that is coming from the league and, and it's statewide in the conference I attended and others is saying, hey, if you're, if you want people to comply with your zoning ordinance, say that in your alcohol beverage code, because if, it may be somewhat redundant, but it, it doesn't set you up for potentially having an argument later, whereas somebody says, I want to locate in, at this site. It's not properly zoned, but I'm going to DOR for the, I'm sorry, I keep pointing at you. You be DOR. I'm going to DOR, and the city of Oshkosh can't, can't say this is against their zoning code because that's not listed in Chapter 4. It's not listed in their alcohol beverage laws. And so then, it doesn't mean we can't enforce it, but it stops an easier method for us to enforce. It, it, if it's there, it's clear. We're gonna, we're gonna make you comply with our zoning ordinance. We're gonna make you pass the police review. We're gonna make you pass a fire inspection, and we're gonna make you get your, whatever health inspection you have to have, which is actually all the same things we already currently.
If, if I can add something, because sometimes in the heat of the moment, you know, things get skipped over, and one of the things that Lynn shared with me, so this is a, you know, this is something that Lynn shared with me, you know, earlier today, and this came from the training session that, that she went to. The changes to Chapter 125 require the criterion for assessing off-site FSR, full-service retail, to be established by ordinance. It specifically says by ordinance. And the council must apply the same criteria that are applied to other Class B licensees. And then it refers to see different chapters of Section 125 for brewers, wineries, and distilleries and rectifiers. The ordinance that's being proposed is simply codifying what is currently done in practice when we have an application. We review their location for zoning, and police, fire, and health do their respective inspections. So we already do these things. We're just getting, it's, it's, I view this as more of a housekeeping item. I don't view this as anything more than that. It's not adding more regulations, and the only thing that's drawing attention to this matter is this very discussion. I'm just suggesting move it along and, and work, then we're consistent with statutes. If you don't do it, it will probably make it more awkward for us to be able to assist these people when they come up because we won't have a single location to refer to.
So if I can add, you know, that's one of the things, like you said, what we're looking at is we're trying to get all of these pieces in place so that if somebody does come forward, we have a process, we, we can help them. We can help applicants. We did, as I mentioned, we had a seminar with our municipal attorneys. The speakers at that were from the law, were from a law firm that specializes in alcohol beverage law. The greater bulk of their clients are distillers, wineries, license holders. I talked to them at the conference and said, hey, you know, I'm a generalist. I, I don't know every nuance, and particularly when they do a wholesale overview. I want to make sure I understand this law. We, we have a good relationship with our licensees in the city of Oshkosh. The clerk's office works really, really well with them. And so I said, you know, we know we need to get some stuff updated. I could use some help. Where are you guys willing to do that? Yep, we can help you. We'll look at it. We had a scoping call with them in July. I hired, hired them to help us. One of the things I specifically asked them is, you represent applicants and you represent license holders. I want you to look at this from a perspective of, are we making this burdensome? Are we creating more issues with this? And they reviewed everything and said, you know, we think this is good. I, I can't remember if we, you know, we've had some tweaks that we went back and forth on, but the final, the, the final product they reviewed, and they said, no, we don't think this is out of, out of line with anybody. And again, this was, you know, that was part of something that we were concerned about. We're not changing things. We're not trying to add new requirements. We're not adding new requirements. We, there is like, I think there's at least one change that we are adding that's separate from that. That's the, we have the process for conditional approval now. We made some clarifying language about the clerk being able, you know, to issue that license when the conditions are met, or frankly, in favor of the licensees, adding a provision that says, hey, if you think a condition imposed by the fire department or somebody is not reasonable, we're adding a, an appeal process. So we were very cognizant of, we're trying not to create those extra burdens.
We're going to go to Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
The chief reason why I was initially in support of withdrawing this was because of my concerns regarding that we are adding extra requirements outside of what Chapter 125 and the Act 73 already stipulates with FSRs and whatnot. I'm grateful and I'm thankful that you have gone over that. I just want to make sure that we're not putting any additional burden on applicants or license holders. So that is where my concern lies. Thank you for answering my question.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. I know some of these, if, if we were to withdraw it, we wouldn't be able to ask these questions, so that's where these questions are coming from, so that I get to ask them and understand if I want to withdraw it or not. But one thing I want to mention is, city manager said the suggestion was to move this along without bringing attention to it. I, I just don't think that's how government is supposed to work, and so I want to call that out. I think that this body is supposed to bring attention to issues we have questions on because it's complicated. I know that's probably not what you meant, but that's.
That's clearly not what I meant.
And so I just wanted to call that out so that you could clarify that, just because I know people at home heard that. And so that's what I heard, and I know that's what you said because I typed it as you said it. So I just want to make sure that that's not what you, what you meant.
No, no, not at all. Thank you. If, if I said that, that's not what I meant. Mr. Larson made some reference to, this is already a process that, and I'm not going to, I don't want to paraphrase, but he was critical that this was going to look bad for the city. And the point is that this very discussion is saying that there's a problem. As Mr. Flohm pointed out, this is, we aren't adding any additional rules at all. All we're doing is aligning our rules with the state rules. And most of these rules already apply to every, everything else we do with Class B licenses. So thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate that. So when, coming back to the motion to withdraw, is there anything, Lynn, in conflict with our current ordinance, with the new ordinance? I know there are things that it says we have to do, but is there anything that if we did not make a change, we could not continue business as usual today?
You can continue business as usual. The problem will come if we have an applicant for, yeah, for the FSRs. We don't have those standards. We're not going to be able to process those efficiently, you know. We probably would still come forward with the zoning stuff to align the, it just would.
We need to do something.
I think this is.
Yeah, we need to do something in order to take the full benefit of the new law.
Right.
Is that right? Okay. And that makes sense to me. But there's not an exposure if we do nothing. It's just that we're limiting actually ourselves.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. It, one, one thing that the city manager read when we were talking about the advice from council, is that we have to, for, for the FSRs in particular, we have to do the same thing we do with other Class B licenses. Is the reverse true necessarily, that anything we do with FSRs, we have to do to all the other licenses? Because the way that, the way that it was read, that it was read out loud was, you need to do the same with FSRs as you're doing with everybody else. But it doesn't say that you have to do it with everybody else as you do.
The way the statute reads is, it's a provision that comes in under the brewers, wineries, and distilleries, and says, your approval must be based on the same, same standards and criteria established by ordinance for evaluation and approval of retail license applications. So, I mean, you, they have to be consistent with each other, but yeah, it's, it's in relation to the FSRs.
Right, so not to jump in, but.
That's the part of the problem. You consumed a considerable amount of time at the front end, and others have pressed their button, so maybe we could.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
We can come back.
So, so I also, I, I learned best through examples. That's just who I am, how I learn. So earlier this year, we spent an hour talking about a particular license to CanCan. Under this new regime, would we have gotten to the point of saying that we could remove the requirement that it goes through zoning and inspections from that license, or would that now exist automatically based on the new ordinance?
Well, they are zoned properly.
They're zoned properly.
No, but there, there was a requirement in that example that we were adding new language to the actual condition of, to get the license granted, and we actually, as a council, removed that. Would that be automatic now?
And I think that's the confusion between what's building inspection and zoning. Zoning is, is this use appropriate for this location? So if you had somebody who had, you know, bought a, a lot in a residential subdivision and said, I'm going to put FSR here, that wouldn't be compliant with our zone.
Sure.
If they put it in, and I have to be honest, I don't remember all this specific, but I like a commer, you know, a commercial zone or a mixed zone, that would be compliant with zoning. And that's what we're, that's what we're talking about, not building inspection. It's zoning. It's, it's very specifically Chapter 30 zoning requirements.
Sure. But, and I'll accept that. The, again, another example, if Surgeon Spirits in Oshkosh wanted to sell their alcohol directly to a, to a full-service retail establishment today, or maybe not under the new law, but today they need to go through a distributor. Tomorrow, under this new ordinance, is that, is that no longer true?
They could establish a full-service retail establishment, so they could either do like a brick and mortar building, and then that's, you know, we would look at that, does, wherever they're planning to place it, is that an okay place to put that type of establishment? Kelly would say, yes, it is, or it's in a residential area. No, try this other, you know, try, try somewhere in that zone commercially. We would, the police would review, the fire would review, the health would review.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, you, we're mentioning that we're going to do the zoning element of this later. Why aren't we doing it all at once?
Because, I think in part because we lost some staff, and it's taking longer.
Got it.
We've, we've looked at it. We've started preparing that, and then we lost some staff. And it does need to go through plan commission and stuff, so.
Yeah, that's helpful. I, I can't say how, I think I'm a no on the motion to withdraw. I, I do want to continue talking about this. Over the next couple of weeks, we got this on Friday. It's a very complicated issue. That's why we had to hire outside counsel. And to Lynn's point, being a generalist, I'm, I'm, my title's Assistant General Counsel in my job, which means I'm an inch deep, but I'm a mile wide, and that's the job. So outside counsel makes a ton of sense to me for this issue, but that means that it also takes a lot to understand. So just so that we can continue talking about this, I think probably I'm a no on the motion to withdraw. Can't say how I'll vote in two weeks, though. Thanks.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I, I think I have similar, I think the cat's out of the bag, Chris.
Either way.
Yeah.
It's my job to do the thing. It is what it is.
And I, I guess I'd like further conversation. To DJ's point, I guess I, I don't know where I'll vote on this in a few weeks, but I think it's worth us kind of talking about a little further. I guess, question for Chris, is, is this zoning specifically kind of the issue, or is this, is there anything in this right now that you take issue with, or I guess, I was having a hard time.
If this were only with regards to FSR, which is what Lynn just read about 125 and the part it references thereafter, Mark and Lynn both read the correct thing. This applies in 125, and Act 73 applies to FSRs only. The consistencies are from existing winery and distillery rules to new distillery and winery rules. What we are doing is adding zoning to every liquor license. It's going to make Diane's job hard.
But it hasn't been added with this yet, right?
We are not.
The, the red line document's in here. I mean, it, it's in here. It says zoning in the, in the resolution.
But we already do look at zoning for every establishment.
You do, but it's not listed as a requirement in the, in the application. That's my, that's my beef with this, that it's explicitly being listed as a new requirement on paper in resolution form with a red line and a clean document that we need to vote on. That's one step too far. That's overreach. That makes it more difficult to do what I do for a living, and that's harder than it is in Appleton. That's the only place I'm going from. It's just bad policy. If this were only about FSRs and not about zoning and consistent with 125 in every way, I would be totally fine with it. I should have kept it that short in the first place. Sorry.
No worries. Yeah, and I guess, this council can certainly decide, I guess, which way they want to lean on the zoning issue, but I do know, it's a pretty mixed bag throughout the state, whether or not you, you do a zoning review. I know many communities that do. I know other communities that even, maybe myself included, have written letters that say you have to like fix the outside of your building to get a liquor license. But it's, I mean, I think there's different levels of, of approval and different, we're, I guess my point is we're not the most strict. But if we want to be more lenient, I guess that's the, the will of this council, but I, I want to make sure that we call it out that the calling, putting the zoning of this isn't by any means weird. It's a decision we have to make.
Before we get to Councilmember Flohm, I'm going to go, I appreciate you asking the direct question to Councilmember Larson, because that's what I've been, I wrote that down 20 minutes ago. And to try to figure out what's, what's the issue with the zoning compliance? I disagree. It's not overly burdensome. It's checking a box. Does it fit within the zoning of that space in the community to put an establishment that sells alcohol? It's not an overly burdensome thing for me. And so I think it's, I'm reading through the red line. I'm reading through all this. There is nothing that's.
And I don't mean to steal your time. Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this isn't, also, it wasn't talking about like building inspections or code enforcement. I was really talking specifically, I mean, zoning is use-based. Why it's not, am I correct on that?
Absolutely. It's only zoning. Building inspections is a totally different situation and analysis that will have to be done, different code that will have to be met. If somebody comes in, they want to open a bar, you know, they're going through zoning already, and so we are already, you know, having them go through that process. And I did mention to Mark, we do have, Diana, I believe we have a supplemental kind of economic impact, and I believe there are questions about zoning in there already. So we are doing it. We want to make sure that this proposed, this liquor license is a good fit. Typically, the zoning's already approved by the point when they're actually coming in for the liquor license, but it just gives us an opportunity with some of the new, you know, state statute changes to just ensure that, because it did take away a little bit of the city's, you know, purview with some of the changes that were made.
Yeah, I forgot where I was, but that's all right. Councilmember Flohm, you go ahead.
Just to clarify, I appreciate staff's, I appreciate staff's follow-up on this. The concern that I have is that at this point in time, I do agree with Councilmember Larson in the way that I do think this is a solution looking for a problem at this point in time. I would like to see this come back in a simplified form with the zoning component complete, because right now it seems to me that it's incomplete as well. So I will vote to withdraw on this.
With that, we've had quite a bit of discussion. I'm going to call the question. If you'll, city clerk, if you'll take the role on the motion to withdraw, and if done, then that would remove this from a future agenda.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Larson?
Yes.
Esslinger?
No.
Flohm?
Yes.
Bulo?
No.
Uguwawa?
No.
We have five no's, two yes, so lost.
So ordinance 24630 will be on next meeting's agenda as well for discussion and a potential vote. Next up, ordinance 24631, again, no action anticipated on this. Create Chapter 4, Article 3A pertaining to alcohol beverages, issuance of special Class B and special, and special Class B licenses. No one registered to speak, and no buttons on that one. All right, moving on to new resolutions. We have Resolution 24633. This is to direct city staff to excuse parking tickets issued to early in-person voters. I have no one registered to speak on this.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Flohm.
Yeah, just quickly, I really appreciate that council was hurt on this issue. I think that, again, I just want to reemphasize that no one has questioned the integrity of our election. People were able to vote early. People were able to vote on Election Day. And I guess maybe a question just for the clerk quickly. I know that you're working on a memo. I just, I guess I want to confirm, we still working on a memo?
I am. I wanted to meet with my chairpersons. That meeting's not happening until July, or I'm sorry, December 10th, which is our next council meeting. So hopefully I can have something. It'll definitely be by the end of the year for you, but if I could get it together that evening, I will.
Perfect. And I, my understanding is that even before Election Day this year, there was a conversation between the clerk's office and the manager's office and, and the police department about ticketing near polling locations. And so I would just encourage us to continue having those conversations for the next elections, but I really appreciate you all hearing us on this. Thanks.
Councilmember Flohm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to specifically thank Councilmember Bulo for bringing this up. This was his idea. He deserves the credit. And so I do think this speaks to a larger point about accessibility, particularly when it comes to early voting. It is not going away, and I think we need to do a better job in making sure that, you know, we cut down on the length of wait. I know that we were doing the best that we can with the resources that we had, but a future action plan to make sure that we have an even more accessible early voting site in the future is what I would like to see. I know that we've given you some instruction on that, and so I would like to thank Carl for this and appreciate the work that you've done as well, Diane. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, you want to go ahead?
Sure. I, well, I appreciate that. Councilmember Flohm, I can't take the credit. Actually, this was a conversation that, that was with Chief Smith, and their team was doing what they needed to do. doing what they needed to do, and this was something that he floated to me. He's like, if this was, is how you feel, this is a possible solution. So, I appreciate that, but it was citizens and, and our staff that really pushed this forward.
So, when this got brought up at the last meeting, I know I was pretty quick to, to say I agreed, and it took me all about five minutes to change, change my mind and realize that I was wrong. Folks had a chance, an opportunity to vote early in the city of Oshkosh. It's a wonderful thing that we do that in the state of Wisconsin. And whether we had this at the Irving location, or we had this at City Hall that we've done, you know, for, for hundreds of elections in the past, there would have been a parking issue. Doesn't matter if it was City Hall parking lot or not. People have been parking on the street and the neighborhoods. They were before in previous big election years, and they would have been this year. In this particular case, I think it's nine, nine individuals, at least that got caught, chose to play the odds. They chose to either say that the laws didn't apply to them, or that they were just going to take the risk and, and roll the dice. And in this case, they rolled the dice and, and it didn't go their way. But they increased the likelihood, or they increased the risk to those that live in that space, whether it was those walking across the street to get to a polling location or get home, whether it was someone traveling down the street, or it could have been public safety that needed to get to a residence, whether ambulance, fire, or police. But because of their illegal parking, that could have increased the risk or likelihood that someone, you know, somebody's injury or somebody's need would have gone unaddressed. So while, in the immediacy, it sounded and felt good, it took me all about 300 seconds to realize that I was wrong, and I'll be voting no on this. People should, should take the time to park legally in the neighborhoods, wherever they're going to be, and parking legally will not inhibit their ability to vote and have that cast and have that counted on Election Night. So, that's where I stand on this one.
Is there any other comments from council? If not, take the role on 24633.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughalbauer?
No.
Curried 6-1.
Resolution 24634. Approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for new Clearwells at 425 Lake Shore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson.
So, some of the same things I said last time. This came before us. I'm just pulling up my notes here. This was when we amended the CIP for the landscape architect across the road. That meeting was 10:22. It referenced a September 26, 2023 meeting of the common council, where allegedly that council agreed that these two projects were separate, that the Clearwells project was separate from Lake Shore Drive and Lake Shore Park. I went back, and there was never a vote on that. There was never four nodding heads, as the mayor likes to say. The only consensus at that meeting was that there weren't enough images of this for that council to make a decision. Then there was an ad hoc committee. Lots of discussion went forth thereafter. This is probably the second-most feedback I've gotten as a counselor, was people on Clearwells and the discussions thereof. And I personally have never understood, when I know there are reasons that, I don't, I don't understand the reasons for these two projects being separate. And I don't think that there's a reason they can't be combined. So, I'd like to see this SIP include Lake Shore Park and Lake Shore Drive, especially because we funded them. And I think if this were a private entity trying to do the same thing, that the city would require that to happen. DJ might know better, because he was there at PC when we passed this. I read through the minutes of PC, and there are no images whatsoever provided today. So we didn't get any more fidelity with how it looks. There's a new landscape plan, but that doesn't help me visualize it at all. So, not to put you on the spot, and I'm sure you have other things to say about it anyway, but I, I can't, I can't vote yes for this the way it's presented, as one separate thing from the next separate thing, when the most important, important thing to everybody seems to be how it's going to look.
If you want to go, you can.
Yeah, I, yes. Okay. So, the conversation that we had, and I see James back there, I don't think I'll have any technical questions, but I reserve the right to change that. But I know when we talked about this at PC, there, there's, there's conversations, and I think I said this at a council meeting, but the people of Oshkosh, we believe that we're going to turn on our faucets, and we're going to get safe, clean drinking water. And after the, the Clearwells are built, we believe we're going to turn on our faucets to get safe, clean drinking water. And that's a testament to James and his team and the people down at the water treatment plant. I think that that's awesome. I think also, to your point, Chris, that people really do care about how this thing's going to look. It's right on the waterfront. We care what the waterfront looks like. That's one of the biggest reasons I live in Oshkosh, is because of the access to water here. I do think, though, that the compromise of a $2.5 million amendment to the CIP to talk about beautification of the area that incorporates not only the Clearwell site, but also the land across the street, which is technically park space, and then across the other street into Menominee Park, I think that's a really good compromise, so that James and his team can continue working through this process. But then the public has assurance that we are going to spend the money to do the research to identify how we can beautify what is going to be a landmark and hopefully not an eyesore. So, I agree with you. I've forgotten a lot of feedback here, but, but the, the fact that the, the items are not together doesn't bother me. And I do have faith that the city is going to work to make sure that, even though they are two separate items on our agenda, that they are moving together. We just understand that the Clearwells, the actual physical plant, has to move first. So, thanks.
Councilmember Stevenson, forceful yours, and then Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I agree with DJ on this one, and I also want to thank him for bringing that CIP amendment for, for, within conjunction with our, our staff. I think it helped solidify that we are committed to both of these projects from a, like, plan. I know I've heard a lot of people wanting these projects to be intertwined. At the end of the day, what we want is a, a really cool kind of waterfront space, and then also clean drinking water. And I think we can have both by not having these two projects combined. I know I've heard some criticisms that we wouldn't let, like, a QuickTrip do this or other, I think kind of a point of reference is, this is on like a legal parcel. The adjacent area is a right-of-way. So, like, that would be asking, like, QuickTrip, you're, you're building, I'm sorry, I'm picking on QuickTrip, but, QuickTrip, you're building here, please improve our road, or please now plant a bunch of things in public right-of-way. We would never do that. We would only ask them to put their plantings, to put their, their site requirements on the site that they own. And if we're looking at this, like, apples to apples, the city owns, or the wastewater treatment facility is that parcel, it's that ownership there, only working on that area. And then the, the public right-of-way is really what, what this body has a lot of control over and a lot of input over. I mean, it's, it's a park, it's a public right-of-way. That's where the city has to kind of come in and have a separate project that would beautify the area, that would make amenities there, things of that nature. So, again, I, I agree with DJ. I think we can do both. I was one of the council members that I said I kind of wanted prettier images. I wanted to send this back and make this, this area look good. I think after I've kind of worked through this whole thing, I am far less concerned about the way the Clearwells look and more concerned about the way that, that, that roadway looks. And I think most people would maybe hopefully agree with that. I think we're, we're going to have a building there regardless. I think how we, how we landscape and how we activate that other space is the important part.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. James, I will ask you to come up, please. Chief Smith got to do it 19 times. You can, you can come on up. So, a couple of the concerns that I've heard and wanted to kind of get your input, and I know that you're looking at this as the engineering facilities, and I want you to do that, because that's your job, but if we keep these separated, is that going to paint us into a picture where we can't then do the beautification for, because, you know, we can't put trees here because now there's pipes there, or we are tying ourselves to a certain plan that we're now going to have to paint in, that if we had thought about them together, that we'd have more flexibility? Can you speak to that?
Absolutely not. The, the infrastructure that would limit planting is all inside the fence, and primarily all exists already. You know, looking at the beautification outside of the fence, you know, the only thing that's outside of the fence from a piping standpoint is, there's a storm sewer outfall that goes from the plant to the lake. That's the only underground infrastructure that is in that Lake Shore Drive street and park area. So, you know, it, it is not going to cause any issues by keeping them separate. And in fact, you know, putting them together would cause more issues in the delays to the work on the water filtration plant site and, you know, probably subsequent enforcement action from the DNR.
Thank you. The other areas around it, the number of parking spots, the width of the road, the, whether it's one-way or two-way, the whole way, I know the ad hoc committee has had lots and lots of different conversations. Does this tie us into any of those decisions, or are those still up for discussion?
This approval tonight is completely independent of those discussions. This is literally for what is inside the, the little square parcel that's owned by the water filtration plant.
Thank you. I appreciate all that. I'm going to, I'm done with you, but if others may have more questions for you. One of the residents who doesn't actually live in this area, but has described this as, one of the reasons why he cares so much is because this is the most magical part of Oshkosh to him. And I remember 17 years ago, when my partner and I were looking for a place to, to settle down, and she was going to UW Oshkosh, this was the first place that our realtor actually took us, was down along that waterfront in that area. So, I appreciate greatly what Councilmember Nichols did to make sure that we had codified some funding to make sure that this project gets done. I am in agreeance that these are separate issues in terms of, we need safe drinking water. We can still have the flexibility to make it look like we want to make it look, and I leave that to people who are way better at that kind of stuff to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Flum.
Thank you. I would also like to thank Councilmember Nichols for his vegetarian amendment on that. The thing that's important to me is to make sure that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And I have full confidence that city staff can do that in terms of making sure that we have clean drinking water, to Councilmember Bulo's point, and to make sure that it's still a beautiful location that won't negatively or adversely impact people's desire to go there and go to Menominee Park, Fish, whatnot, people who live in that neighborhood. So, initially I had some concerns. I heard from a lot of residents, but I do like what I see, just making sure that, to Councilmembers Bulo's point, that we, we follow along with the instructions that were laid out in the budget amendment. We'll go from there. So, thank you.
Go right ahead. Quick little anecdote. Yeah, for, for the tight site that you guys are working with, I think landscaping looks very good. Just from an anecdotal perspective, I, I think we've put a lot in where it is a very hard space to work in. Obviously, we can do a lot more with the other side of the project, but I think you guys did a good job at trying to soften those features where you could.
I do, I want to, I want to agree with a lot of what Councilmember Nichols and Stevenson had said. The one thing I want to point out, at least just for a clarification standpoint, we're two to three years away from, from improving that parcel of land with that landscaping.
Correct.
I mean, roughly. So, and it's not that the discussion has to wait two or three years, but it also, we don't have to hold up the project on the physical plant because of that. We have plenty of time. It's locked in in terms of, council has deemed that we will do something, and, and staff can't move away from that position. So, having them as two separate issues is completely fine. In fact, we do that regularly through, or even allowing staff to handle landscaping things when it comes to plans and not having to come back through council. So, this isn't necessarily not treating us the same as we treat other developments. It's taking into account the complexity and size, as well as the duration of this project. And once they're all done, then we get to come back in, and, you know, what can we do reasonably, and what can we do, make it a spectacular space and try to make the best out of it? It's a narrow sliver, but how do we make the best out of it? And I think, I think we're going to be able to do that, so.
Excuse me, if, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
You know, certainly we have already started our kickoff, and there will be a lot of visioning and looking at options over the course of the next two years as we work on the design of the Lake Shore Drive and the, the park area. And all that's going to be going on while, you know, three years' worth of building construction is taking place across the street.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson.
Quick one. Mayor, to your point, and James to that last point, we do have plenty of time for all these things, right? We've got two years for the plant, we've got two years before we can do anything. I've never heard the compelling reason that these things can't be considered at the same time. Do we need to wait until one's done before we do the next? That's what I was saying.
We need to get the building construction started next spring.
Sure.
And the, the revisioning of Lake Shore Drive is, is going to take a year and a half to two years to complete. But we need to be under construction next spring in order to meet the compliance plan that we have with the DNR.
Okay. Mr. Nichols.
And I guess maybe just one, one thing I'd like to clarify, or the way, maybe just say how I view this. So, the next item on the agenda is also about the Clearwells project. There's a lot of times we, we do multiple resolutions or an ordinance and a resolution for the same project. I think this is a good example of that. It feels like two different things, but we are walking and chewing gum, to use that phrase that someone used earlier. I think, I think we're talking about it as two different things, because we're voting on it two different times, but we do that all the time. That, that's just kind of how it works. And then, while I'm talking, and James, while you're up there, I think any council member that hasn't been to the water filtration plant or the water treatment plant, which are both ends of our water spectrum in Oshkosh, the things that those people do are, it is incredible science. It is chemistry, and it's biology, and it makes sure that we all stay safe and that our water that we drink is clean, and the water that we swim in and boat in is clean. So, a shout-out to your team. I know that we're going to continue having that clean water, and I'm confident that these Clearwells buildings are going to be pretty, and the landscaping around it's going to look nice, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
While the museum was great, that was my favorite tour that I've taken with city staff.
I'm still going to say the museum was my favorite. Sorry.
No offense.
It was very interesting, though.
Museum smelled better than the treatment plant.
With that, we will call for the role on 24634.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
No.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flum?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Mughalbauer?
Aye.
Curated 7.
Resolution 24-635, approved conditional use permit request for a temporary use permit extension for new Clearwells construction staging at property located on the east side of the 400 block of Lake Shore Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. Take a motion and a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion on the conditional use permit. If you'll please take the roll on 24-635.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flum.
Aye.
Bealow.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Curated 7.
Final resolution of the evening, 24-636, approve partial land acquisitions at 3277 and 3290 Meadowbrook Road. Plan Commission recommends approval. I do have a Dan Binder, who is registered to speak. Welcome.
Well, I'm Dan Binder. I live on 3277 Meadowbrook Road. It's my property. You wanna, basically, I guess, I don't know why it was never given to the township, so now you wanna acquire it. It's, I've lived in town Gold 47 years, and I enjoy every day of it. I've been in the city for nine months now, and I hate every second of it. Back years ago, when they went into disagreement with the township and the city, they, we were against that because, I shouldn't say that, I should say I, I was for it because I agree, I'm gonna be 69 years old when I go into the city. I, I get it. You can't go anywhere except west. The problem I had was back when they did the Pheasant Creek development for Rouge. I told Plan Commission then that there was a ditch on his side of the property that needed to be there to drain farmer's field behind my house. Well, Plan Commission knew better than I did. I lived there, they didn't, so they buried the ditch. Now, for 17 years, I get six inches of water in my yard and my garage in the backyard. So now I have a bad taste in my mouth already because of the city. Now you're coming around, you wanna take this land from me so you can run the sewer and water from my property, which everybody on my road has a working septic and well. You're gonna, you're gonna take the property no matter what I say, but I'm opposed to it because what's gonna happen then, I'm gonna get sewer and water, you guys are gonna do the same thing to me and the people on my street that you're doing to the people on Clearville Road right now. So where I stand, I don't wanna sell the land, but I know I'm a little fishing the pond. You don't care, so you're gonna take the property away from me. So that's all I've got to say like that.
Thank you. I'll take a motion and a second to put 24-636 on the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. And Kelly, if you don't mind, I have a couple of questions. I wasn't at Plan Commission last week because we were doing city manager interviews, so I probably would've asked these then. But I guess maybe my first question, this, this resolution in particular, is this requiring anyone to sign up for city water, city sewer, anything else, or is this only connecting the road?
Right now, this is just dedicating right of way.
So us passing this resolution does not do anything to actually install any infrastructure in that area?
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess maybe just in response to some of the gentleman's questions, the six inches of water in someone's garage and backyard, that's something certainly I would, I would care about, and so I would show up here, too. There's a resident from Seventh Avenue here, I can see her in the audience, and so she's here to ask about flooding as well. If we were to do infrastructure work in this area, would we install storm sewers?
I believe so. I'll defer to...
You're asking James questions now.
Sorry, James.
Make, do his steps.
Sorry. I said nice things about your department, so.
And I guess I just want to clarify, when the gentleman said he came into the city, that was part of our boundary agreement that the city has with the town of Algoma. That Zone C attachment was, they were actually in the city as of March 1st, 2023.
Thanks.
I don't remember what the current plan is off the top of my head. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nichols.
That's okay.
I believe at the Plan Commission meeting...
Justin.
Yep, Civil Engineer Supervisor, Justin Girock, had said that multiple people that live on this road had reached out once they came into the city, inquiring about city utilities. So that was the reason why. There's been no assessments, there's been no plans. I think it was just the, a figure that was provided was just based off of the bids we're getting for other projects. So it's just like, this is what it would be, but nothing, I don't think, has been designed.
There were plans for sewer and water prepared, and that's when the, the issue with the right of way not being in place was discovered. So that's, those were, you know, put on the shelf in order to finish dealing with the right of way issue.
And so after the right of way issue is taken care of, we will continue having conversations as a city about those infrastructure projects, and will the council see them again?
Yes, certainly, you know, that is, you know, obviously, before any contract can get awarded, it has to come to you. It is something that was included in the capital improvement plan for 2024, but, you know, that is certainly conversations that we can continue to have with council if that's what you desire.
Yeah, I just think that would be helpful. I mean, especially with the water issue that the gentleman mentioned with the, with the water in his yard. I know that there's, there's positive and negative with hooking up to city infrastructure. I've heard that from residents of Clearville Road, for example, or, I guess, opinions on positive and negative, I should say it that way, but this might be actually in that positive. And then, I think, James, that's all the question I have for you, but I, I guess maybe a process question. So Clearville Road is something that we've read about in the newspaper, we've seen media reports on, we had people come and speak here. This, this situation's very similar. I know that was in the minutes of the PC meeting last week, it's very similar. Have we done anything differently as a city to address this, or is it the same process?
No, I think that, that should be me then.
Okay.
I don't have to do the walk-up either. I think there's a couple differences, but to answer your specific question, there, you, the council has directed us to look at what we can do relative to Clearville Road and obviously anybody else. We have not done that yet, we owe that to you. Clearville Road won't be seeing any assessments sent to them until next fall. They might get some estimates in August.
I don't even know if it'll be next year with the way that construction progress is progressing.
So we, we don't assess until the project is completed. By policy, it's within two years of the project completion, and so James is now hedging, he probably hasn't wanted to burden me with that answer, but...
Construction will likely not be done until next fall on that project.
So if that's the case, then it would be fall of '26, before even Clearville's addressed.
Sure.
So I think that's what you were asking, right?
Well, that's part, that's part of my question. I guess maybe my point, the reason I'm asking the question, is I, I think that we are reacting as a city to an agreement that was done before almost any of us were here, certainly sitting up here. And I responded to a resident's email earlier today, and I said, I certainly would be upset that I'm having to react to something that was done before I moved into my house, or before I lived in the city, whatever it could've been. And so I just want to make sure that we're continuing to have conversations. It sounds like we're gonna be able to do that, not only for this project, but also for Clearville Road. And I think there's an acknowledgement that we can continue having conversations and hopefully improve on perception here, both for the project itself, and then the gentleman's comment about having been in the city for nine months and not having enjoyed being in the city. I think we can improve that perception, too, and it's just, as long as we continue communicating and working on these projects and identifying ways that these were solutions for the residents and not just policies that we're enforcing, that'd be my preference.
If I could just add a couple things, because I wanted to, I wanted to make sure I answered DJ's question before I went off on some other issues. There may be some questions about if Mr. Girock indicated that, some people had indicated, Dan's indicated, he's not aware of anybody. We can work that out, if there, if there is or isn't. This is, while it's close to Clearville Road, I would say this is more akin to what happened the last phase of annexations we did 10 years ago, and that was over on Ripon Lane. And at the time, there was like, why do we need to do it? And the residents there asked about it, and, and I kind of challenged Public Works, say, do we have to do it, or is it just that we, we should do? Well, we should do it for best long-term, but we don't have to. Eventually, the neighbors decided when it was gonna get done, because the minute somebody's well failed, they came to us, and then we said, all right, we gotta start doing this. And then, once we got a second one, it's like, we gotta do the whole street, guys. And then it kind of just, everything fell into place. Normally, we've said, oh, yeah, we, we need to do it, but do we have to do it? I think we can take a look at that. If nobody wants it immediately, Clearville Road, the reason it's different is Clearville was a major loop in our system. This is not a major loop in our system. We don't have to do Meadowbrook, but if people ask, we need to do it, and then we may end up having to do it. It'll be, it'll be good to have a loop go through the street that connects over to Meadowbrook.
Linden Oaks, Meadowbrook and Linden Oaks up the night.
Yeah, it would be helpful to loop that. That's good for system reliability. Must we do it immediately? No, I, I don't think we need to do it. And I think we can continue those conversations, and I'll, because James was in the room, even though I don't think you were the director at the time, I think we had...
Not with Ripon Lane, no.
But we had that discussion about, let's hold off and wait until we need to do Ripon Lane because the residents want it. So I think we can have that same conversation. So there's my, there's my passing advice to you, because I think you've got time to take a look at this.
Yeah. That's exactly what I wanted to hear, and hopefully, that's what the gentleman and his wife in the, in the back wanted to hear as well. I think that as we continue to have conversations with residents in these areas, as we do these future annexations, I think that's gonna solve a lot of our problems, or potential problems, or created problems, whatever you wanna call them. So I'm glad that that was the answer, and, and so I'm happy to talk to you all more, I'm happy to facilitate conversations with Public Works or anybody else in the city. But welcome to Oshkosh. I think you're here at this point, and so I'm hoping that we can make the, the relationship good and not just negative. Thanks.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, Mark, I'm glad you pointed that out, that the issue, I mean, when it comes down to it, I mean, well and septic is the issue right now, and I also like to just make sure council's aware that, I mean, typically, we're gonna start putting, we're not just gonna piecemeal sewer systems in there. If one well goes bad, or a collective of wells goes bad, we might very well get another round of residents that come up here that says, my well is perfectly good, but we have to put it all in at once. So I, I do think we can maybe give a little bit more time and, and maybe wait for those wells to age, well and septic to age a little bit more, but there's pros and cons to the entire issue. I think as far as just this, this resolution goes, just from the road perspective, I do think we need, it's best practice to have two exits out of subdivision. I mean, it's chief, both chiefs, I don't know if both are back there, but, I mean, it's really imperative from a, like, public safety perspective. If there was a tree or something that would block an exit, and then somebody were to have a medical emergency on the other side of that exit, it would be very hard for them to get out. And just from a traffic flow perspective, too, it's, it's good to have both those, those road connections. I also would say that I don't think this is gonna be a high-traffic area. I don't think you guys are gonna experience increased traffic because of that connection. People are mostly going to be traveling east, they're likely not gonna be traveling through Meadowbrook Road right there to, to go about their daily lives. They're gonna be going towards those RT real roads, so I guess just a handful of items, but.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe a legal question, Lynn. Do we have an ordinance that states that we do not, in the city of Oshkosh, we do not allow wells for residential structures?
There's a requirement, if you have a well, to have it tested and...
Yeah, we require inspections to make sure the water's safe, drinking water, but if you do have a well, you can continue to use it, and typically, if there's not access to water, city water.
Right. Okay. Next question is, I personally think that it's a good idea to, you know, ask people if they want the city services and kind of gauge that, but my legal question to you is, if you're under the same agreement and you're allowing one, one part of the city not to do it, and then you're requiring Clearville to do it, do you run into any legal problems if you're gonna get sued by someone that you're allowing it for one and not the other?
Isn't that clear in what agreement we're talking about?
If, if we're not going to require that they use, that we put in city services in, in these properties, and we require other ones under the same agreement that everyone signed, do you run into any legal issues with that?
I don't think that's addressed in the agreement at all, but those are all, those are legislative discretion kind of decisions for you, and councils are afforded pretty broad immunity for decisions that are made in your legislative discretion.
If I can maybe, so I, I think with, yeah, I, I think with some of this, it's, they will eventually always have city services. I think it's, it's council that determines timing, and with Clearville Road, it sounds like timing was pretty imminent, but with this, we're kind of saying, you know, timing, it's not a necessary loop right now, it's not a, a huge thoroughfare. Timing is maybe a little bit more wishy-washier, it could be extended a little bit more, if I'm...
Well, I guess if I were the person on Clearville Road, I'd be saying, why am I being treated differently?
I would say that the primary...
No, I, I get it.
Yeah.
I believe what you said is a reasonable...
I thought you wanted an answer not rhetorical.
No, no, I guess it was rhetorical, but that's the stickiness you get into is, they're paying, they're playing favorites. And, you know, another thing is, you know, when we, when we negotiate these contracts and these issues, these are things that go along with it, and sometimes, they're not pretty, and they're not fun, but when you have two elected bodies that this runs through and you agree with them, that's the way it goes. I mean, I hate to say that, but you can't pick and choose which ones you like, you know? If your representatives that you either voted for or you didn't vote for passed it, that's what we got.
Councilmember Flum.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this is a, an exercise in ensuring that people who get annexed into the city are, are given the right information, they can work with staff, they're given the appropriate resources, and they know what's gonna happen versus what isn't gonna happen. I think the issue that happened on Clearville Road was, it tinged everybody's perception that this is always gonna be the standard operating procedure of anybody who gets annexed into the city of Oshkosh, which isn't the case. I'm sorry that you have had issues with water, I would be unhappy about that, too, to, to Councilmember Nichols's point, I'd be quite upset. But I know that going forward, in terms of, James, I don't, you know, I do have the site plan off the top of your head, but working with residents, making sure that those issues are alleviated, is part of the reason why we're here. And so I hope that it's a better experience for you guys going forward. I would say welcome to the city as well, and if there's anything that you need from us, please, we're here to help, and we want to make sure that we hear you out, so, thank you.
One more question. So discussion, or at least from city manager, you know, that the utilities themselves aren't necessarily necessary immediately, but part of the reason for acquiring this is to create the right of way and create the connection point to that subdivision to the, to the east. If we weren't to do any utilities, or plan to do any utilities in the near future, what would be your plan in terms of the road connection point in between where dead ends now and the new one that, or on both sides? What, do you have a plan, or do you need to, I shouldn't ask you if, if, if I don't know the answer already, but do you have a plan for how you're gonna do that, or is that gonna be delayed as well? Just from my own...
That would likely be delayed, but I'd have to go back and talk that over a little bit. As, as Kelly had indicated, City Engineer Girock has received some inquiries about utilities on this stretch, but certainly, we will go back and, and talk with everyone, and, you know, if there is a way to, to delay, you know, we will work with that. But I think, I don't know for sure about the, the street connection itself, whether we would, you know, if we're not doing any work out there, I probably wouldn't look to build it until we are doing work. But this would just have the right of way in place for when that time comes.
Okay. Appreciate the, the answer. Deputy Mayor Bealow.
Thank you. Just clarification, because you said it a couple times, that you've received a couple inquiries or, or your staff has. Were they, when is, what were the inquiries? Were, can this happen? Will this happen? How much will it cost? Like...
I don't know off the top of my head, Deputy Mayor, I don't, I don't remember.
Okay, that's fair.
I know City Engineer Girock had said he has been asked about utilities, so...
Okay. I just wanted to get a feeling on, like, it was like a, hey, can you do this for us? Or was it a, please don't do this for us? Like, that, that was my only question, but if you don't, that's...
I, I don't have that specific information, I'm sorry.
That's fair.
Okay. If there's nothing else on this one, I'll call the roll for...
Can I add something for it?
We're on our part now.
Well, I could clarify something for you.
I would love it. Sure.
If you can come up to the microphone at least, appreciate it, sir.
We're already after 8 o'clock, let's, might as well.
If any of you have the map, you'll notice that Linden Oaks runs off of 9th Street, then Meadowbrook turns to the east and dies into the city. The reason they're acquiring my land is because they're gonna run the sewer and water from Heidi Haven Drive to the corner of Meadowbrook and Linden Oaks. So from Linden Oaks, it'll drain into the city that way. Everybody on Linden Oaks is gonna drain up to 9th Street because they don't have the depth they need. And to clarify the other thing, I already did get a general assessment from the city engineer, because he was out at our house when this came up with the road. I already have my assessment for $21,000 for water main, $21,000 for sanitary sewer, $11,000 for the six-inch lateral, $7,500 for storm sewer, $2,200 for driveway, and $6,700 for engineering. So I already got an assessment for $64,000, which does not include another 10 or 15 for me to hook it up to my house. Yeah, I already have the assessment, so I know what this is gonna cost. That's why I say you're gonna do the same thing to me, because the problem you guys have to change is, everybody out by me, they were one-acre lots. I have 240 feet of road frontage. The average lot in the city is, what, 60 feet? They would get an assessment for $15,000. Charge me $15,000, hook up their sewer and water, I'll do it today. I'll write you a check all right here, and we can walk away. So I already have an assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, can I just ask a couple clarifying questions, just to, I know that other people in this neighborhood are, have received similar letters. My understanding is that was an estimate based on, on information that we have today, is that right?
Correct.
And I also want to clarify that any actual assessments that are assessed against those properties would come before council, right? And they have not, yet.
Correct. Correct.
So right now, we have assessments that are out to the field, that big numbers, and I don't, I would be upset about looking at those numbers as well, but those, those letters don't mean anything today. Is that right?
Correct. That was, again, in the interest of trying to provide information and being upfront, there was estimates based on current rates, depend, you know, but any action to actually levy those assessments has not come before you yet, so there are no assessments levied against those properties.
That, that's incredibly helpful. And then, so these conversations can continue to be had. The work is not set in stone, and those assessments haven't gone out yet. So there, it's worth continuing the dialogue between the residents and council at this point, is, would be my opinion. Do you all agree?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
I see no one else. Call the roll on 24636.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Muga-Wauer.
Aye.
Karyt Seven.
So that racks up our action items for the evening. We'll move on to council discussion. Council, we're past the 8 o'clock mark. Usually, I like to take a brief, brief break.
I'm going to step out real quick, but you all keep going.
Nope, we're going to take a brief break. Let's keep it to maybe five minutes-ish, and we'll be back about 8:15.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at OshkoshMedia.org. Please stay with us.
First up, discussion and direction to City Manager. We have a topic of West 7th Avenue reconstruction update. Not sure who's going to provide the update.
It's just going to be a brief update. Mr. Garrick had the meetings with the two different consultants. They're both willing to help provide some guidance, and I believe one of us, one of them is imminently going to provide us a scope and a budget for the work they, that they will be doing. So we'll be reviewing that. So they, Mr. Robbie is hoping that they get it tomorrow, but with it being near a holiday, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guarantee that. But they both indicated they would submit something, hopefully, one tomorrow, and then we'll start looking at it. That's really all the update I have at this time.
Okay. Just, just one question on that. So I know we talked about last, last council meeting, that you could, even, even if the cost of that is, is above your normal threshold, you could declare a state of emergency to go ahead and get that work done. Is that, would that happen for this part of the project, if it, if we're able to get moving before December 10th?
Yeah, I, I'll take a look at what this is. Anything under $75,000, I can do and simply report it to the, over 25, between 25 and 75, I just report it to council, council doesn't approve it. Above 75, it would require council approval. If needed, given all the circumstances, I'll, I'll waive my emergency powers.
Great. Thanks.
On a different topic, for, at least, direction to City Manager, wondering if you could actually add, under your outstanding issues, and while I understand that you've only got one more meeting to handle the outstanding issues, it's a matter of making sure that city staff is still working on things and into the next administration, right? Coming off the last discussion we just had, back when the previous council was seated, Councilmember Ford at the time had brought up, and you alluded to it just earlier, investigating and reporting back on, one, special assessment deferrals for situations like this, you know, in terms of an annexation where, you know, steep costs after an annexation for, for utility projects. I'd like that on your outstanding issues, so that stays there. But the second part, actually, for me, is the policy itself that governs that really big number that these folks are getting estimates on, and or, you know, in the future may get special assessments on. Council hasn't talked about or learnt, I don't think enough, on those policies that dictate what the number is, you know, what the bill might be for those. Now, one of those is completely within our control, storm sewer. The other two happen to be governed by Public Service Commission, but I don't know that council has enough, any council has gotten enough information on those, and I think it'd be good to educate us on why those numbers are what they are, so that way, we can start having a discussion of, is that reasonable? Is there other things that, other creative ways that we should be trying to address some of those situations into the future? This is not the last time we're going to have this. We're going to have more of these.
Yeah.
We may not have many, but it will continue to happen, and it'd be nice that, the, the effects of our current policy are, they suck, on the individual property owners. It's, it is what it is, but I'd like to lessen the "is what it is" if, if we can in the future, but we can't if we don't know.
Yeah. I can share with you that the situation that the council's dealing with now is very similar to my experiences with, when I was in Grand Shute, because it was a rural area, and once development caught up to these formerly rural areas, the cost goes up, because it's the number of feet, as Dan said earlier. I mean...
We ran into a 9th Avenue development west of Oakwood. I'm aware of the conversation.
The minute we hopped 41, when we did 9th.
I'm aware. We talked about it, and because those were 80 and 100-foot lots compared to 60-foot lots in the city, it was just a bigger number. But now, we're talking 200 and 250 foot, or 40, I think it was, for that resident. Now, you're starting to see it by magnitude that...
I don't want to put the planners on the spot, but generally, at, at planning school, they tell you, "That's the cost of having less dense development." That's so, did I pass that? I never took a planning class, just full disclosure.
But at least into the future, if we could, at some point, if we could be a little bit, you know, it doesn't have to be in, in session, but even a memo, but educate us a little bit on why those numbers are what they are, and if there's creative options into the future, that would be really nice to hear.
Very good. I will add that, I will gladly add that to the...
Yeah, I'm sure you will gladly add that.
But, but I had already made the note, because we got to follow up. And I will tell you that Mr. Ford continues to remind me of that issue.
I expect nothing less from a former council member, so...
Okay.
Mr. Larson has a...
I buzzed in and said the exact same thing, and Ford buzzed me about it also, said more than just a memo, a discussion on that deferment policy would be fantastic, so we can not continue to have the same conversation over and over again.
And I think we agreed to call it just payment policy. Was that what I was supposed to be saying?
Something along those lines.
I like deferment, just fine. I'm just saying.
But I understand what the mayor's saying. It's like, you know, can you sort of give us a, you know...
Why is it this way right now, and what options may we have in the future? So, Mr. Flom.
Not to pile on here, but I guess I will. I would love to see that as well. These are questions that I get from residents on the west side of town all the time, and I would just like to be able to provide some more context and get some further education on the matter. So appreciate that, as well as the payment policy, too. I know that we have a lot up in the air right now, but it's not something that I've forgotten about, so would like to see that as well.
Any other discussion or direction to City Manager? If not, we'll move to future agenda item meetings and workshops, where we have a presentation from the Oshkosh Area Human Society. It looks like that's to be determined, but in the works.
Mr. Esslinger kind of volunteered to coordinate that, so...
Yeah.
I'll put it in your lap, Paul.
Yeah, since my initial meeting with them, I have not called them, they have not called me back. I know they said they were going to talk to some of the staff and hit on the points that they want to, so I'm assuming they're probably, I was going to call them today, but I just ran out of time. So my guess would be that they would be here the first meeting in December, and of course, we're not having a second one, so it would be the first meeting in January.
Well, be happy to see it when it...
Yep.
When they can.
Yep.
Okay. There's nothing else there. I have a brief council member announcements, statement under that. Just a brief statement, more for the public in regards to our, our current status on the recruitment for our next city manager. Just because there's been plenty of questions within the media, the public, city staff, and it's, it's at least good to give you a, a current state. Till last Monday, we held a public meet and greet at the convention center to interact with our four finalists. First, I want to thank members of the public, city staff that were there, my full council, all my council colleagues, as well as the, the four finalists for a wonderful meet and greet that took place that evening. It was nice for members of the community to be able to participate in that process and provide feedback to council to use during our deliberations. Then Tuesday, the four finalists participated in round robin interviews with city department head panel, community member panel, as well as, of course, the full city council. And again, we received really helpful and direct feedback from both the department head panel, as well as the community members that, that participated, for us to be able to use during our deliberations. We are currently completing additional steps in the hiring process, and no decision has been made. So really, the update for today is that be patient, stay tuned, but no decisions have been made at this time. I know it doesn't necessarily clear everything up, but hopefully, it gives us enough that we're working on it, we're taking it serious. I appreciate council's deliberations and their efforts during all the sessions. I expected nothing less, and thankfully, I've been very pleased with how well the process has gone so far, so. With that, for the public, media, any questions on the city manager recruitment can still be directed to either Assistant City Manager John Fitzpatrick or myself, and we'd be happy to, to make sure that we answer those questions as best as we possibly can. With that, is there any other announcements or statements for, for council members? Otherwise, we'll turn it over to City Manager for his announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four memos in the agenda packet regarding professional services agreements. As I mentioned earlier, you know, anything between 25 and 75,000, I report to council, and those four are there, with AECOM for storm water management assistance for 2025, KL Engineering for transportation, engineering on-call assistance, Donahue for structural engineering. I think Councilmember Nichols recently said, "Do we have a structural engineer on staff?" No, we have a contract with Donahue and Associates, so I should have looked at this before I gave you that answer, DJ. And then AECOM for the water distribution system leak detection. So all those issues are there. And then I also provided the council with a list of outstanding issues. I will add those, those two items to kind of keep them, keep them separate and distinct, and we'll add that to the list of outstanding issues. Happy to answer any questions.
I see none. I think Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor has a motion he'd like to make, though.
I do. I move that the common council convene in the closed session pursuant to Section 19.851E of Wisconsin statutes where competitive and bargaining reasons require closed session, specifically review of options for the future city hall.
Take a second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, if you'll take the roll on motion to go into closed session.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Beal.
Aye.
Muga-Wauer.
Aye.
Karyt Seven.
Take a motion to adjourn, no second, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.